I'd like to call the meeting of the Vader City Council to order at two minutes. It's at two minutes. The light shines on it.
Something like that.
Something like that. On December 12, 2019. Roll call. Will the clerk now call? Wyatt?
Donna Rogers? Here. Jason Daly? Not here. He is not here yet. So, we need to do something about his status. That means, we want to assume he's unexcused absence at this point? And if he comes in later, then that'll be erased?
Okay.
If that's the case, there has to be a motion.
Okay. Is there a motion to allow him to be a little late? Is that what I want to say?
I'll make a motion that he is no-show until he gets here.
Okay.
If he gets here.
Okay. Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, hold on, we gotta finish. That's a motion, so you gotta go through the motion. I didn't put that in your script.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So, you have to ask for a second.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion by the council? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? No. The motion is carried.
I'll finish roll call now.
Okay.
Joe Shy, he has asked to be excused. He's got a Cub Scout, Boy Scout Court of Honor to be at tonight. Mike Parsons?
Here.
Samantha Lovelady?
Here.
And Mayor Lois Wilson?
Here.
You do have a call, Mayor.
So, we can have our meetings. I was gonna ask if Donna Rogers would like to lead the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'd like to report that Donna Rogers has been sworn in and is seated in her newly-elected council position number one. She's been seated before January 1 because she is filling a seat that had previously been appointed. Now that she has been elected by the voters, she can take her seat prior to January 1. And I would like to give a little report on the mayor's meeting that was up in Centralia, Shaheela's area. Anyway, what I wanted to talk about when it was my turn is I wanted to talk about the '09 funds. And this, the '09 funds will help replace loans and will also help keep our sewer bills from increasing very much. And the, there was quite a few people there that were trying to, we were all trying to get '09 money, obviously, but anyway. I think they've been real receptive to us. And if I can, see how much money we got from the sewer ran out?
Well, we have about 1.5 left in loan that we still need to get out of the project. It's estimated at 4.8. So, we've got all grant now except for about 1.5 million still left in loan that we're trying to work on that '09 funds and also legislative.
And that will open up the city so that we can get more people in for buildings, you know, for living here. Because of, anyway, it was a good meeting and I enjoyed it, I guess you'd say. Does the council have any reports? No reports. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the city council meeting agenda for 12/12/2019.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Is there any council discussion? All those in favor of, well, I guess we have no discussion. That seems odd.
What?
There's no discussion.
On the agenda?
No.
That's pretty typical.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the city council meeting and workshop minutes for
Is all those in favor?
I'm set.
Do we have a second?
Oh, yeah. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carried. Vouchers. Do we have a motion to approve the vouchers? It's?
I'll make a motion to approve the first half of December vouchers, December 2019,
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any council discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried.
Jason, did you vote? I couldn't hear.
Aye.
Okay. Just wanna make sure.
Is there any special reports tonight?
Nope.
Nope?
It should say there aren't any.
None. Now for city business. The first item of business is for the council to consider ordinance 2019-08, which is an ordinance to amend the 2019 street fund budget. Do we have a motion on that ordinance?
I'll make a motion. I move to adopt ordinance 2019-08 amending the adopted 2019 budget to reflect the acceptance of additional grant revenues from TIB for the city's street fund and amending the street fund revenues and expenditures by $28,490.
Do we have a motion to, on the ordinance? Do we have a second, I should say?
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any council discussion further with that?
What was that, what was that for? The $28,000? I'm not familiar. Is that that much?
Oh, so there were a couple of different amendments that were made along the way, but the main one was at the end, the contractor realized that they didn't, didn't do their totals right for their concrete, and so they asked for more money. And we told them that this is paid for by a grant, so we have to go to the grantor. And the grantor looked it up and agreed that it was, it was correct, their corrected amount. So, they gave us more. And that went directly to the contractor. And I should've done this amendment back at that time when we paid them, but I didn't. I didn't catch it until just now. So, this is just kind of ratifying what already happened.
Anyway, do we have, we have the motion on it in the council's discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ms. Rogers, did you vote? I didn't. Oh, you did. You said aye. Okay.
You just didn't hear me.
I know. I'm having a hard time telling who's saying it and who's not. Thank you.
The motion is carried. The second item of business is for the council to consider that ordinance 2019-09, which was an adopt, ordinance to adopt the 2020 budget. Do we have a motion on the ordinance? Do we? Did you guys skip that?
I move to approve ordinance 2019-09 adopting the annual budget for the city of Vader for the calendar year 2020 substantially as written.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any council discussion on it?
I was wondering if council would like to have an explanation of some of the changes 'cause if you know, in my, on the agenda bill, I noted that there have been some changes to it. If you guys are interested in what they are, I'd be happy to go through them. If you're not really worried about it, if you're happy with the final totals, then you can just move on. It's up to you.
Well, when you put those asterisks in there, was that adding or deducting?
They're each different. Some were more, some were less. So, I just made an asterisk to anything that was different than the last version of the budget that I had prepared and given to council. So, some of them were up, some of them were down. But the biggest thing, some of them, one of them was an error. I found that I had kind of moved some of the lines down and they were lined up incorrectly. And so, when I, we had more coming out of the street fund about $14,000, is that right? About $12,000 more was being deducted for the deputy clerks. That it was wrong. So, I corrected that. So, that put $12,000 more into the current fund. That was an expenditure that just needed a correction. The other thing that I felt was important for you guys, the other ones are all kind of nominal. Like, I realized that we got more revenue on some, so I upped the revenue a little bit. The expenditures have pretty much stayed the same as what council was, what had approved before. But the biggest thing is, is that our street fund, if you guys remember from our last meeting, was in the hole. And we were really struggling with that. And when I did these final numbers, the street fund was still in the hole. And I thought, that's not right. I don't understand why the street fund's in the hole. It shouldn't be in the hole. And I just kept going over the numbers and trying to figure out. And I finally realized what happened. We were in the hole about $11,000 on the street fund. And I finally realized what had happened is that I made an error last year when we did the 2019 budget for the street fund. I was expecting the street project to be completed before the end of 2018. So, I didn't put any street fund expenditures for that project, that A-street project, in the 2019 budget at all. But what ended up, and so the only thing that was left to pay was about $11,000 to the contractor was their retained funds, which in a project like that, we retain 5% of their contract until all the paperwork's done. When all the paperwork's done and approved by all the state agencies, then we release that final 5%. So, that money was still being held, and I didn't account for it. And I expected, in my mind, when I was doing the budget for this year, I expected that that would all be done by the end of 2018 and we wouldn't have to deal with that. Well, it didn't work out that way. And so, it rolled into 2019, but I had never included it in the budget. And so, the budget numbers were, that's why they've been off. And this whole year, it's always been really super low, and I've been just scratching my head about that all year. I finally realized what it was. So, thankfully, we had enough in the current fund to roll some, roll that $11,000 into the street fund to bring our street fund back up to where it's supposed to be. And so, we are able to account for it. And if you look at the budget, the one that shows the whole year, the very first budget page in the attachment, you'll see that all of our funds are right on where they're supposed to be after doing that additional transfer into the street fund to account for that. I apologize that I, it was just a mistake that wasn't caught until, you know, I finally found that last little thing. So, that's, that's the big thing, is that there's a, there's a transfer of about $11,000 from the street, from the current fund into the street fund. Everything else is pretty much just little tweaks here and there. Those funds were okay anyways. So, that's really the only major thing. So.
I have a question about the sewer fund loan. Does that ever get paid back?
Not yet. It's not, it's not scheduled to be paid back until the, either the house is foreclosed on or until it's sold and the liens are paid. And when they get paid back, it'll pay back into the, it'll pay that fund back with interest.
Okay, but that, that loan was taken out way before that ever happened. You said this house? So?
Okay, so maybe I'm not understanding. I thought you were talking about the E-fund loan.
Well, you know, this, this happened way back, the 10, last year, $10,000 loan from the sewer fund. So?
It's regarding code enforcement property. That's what it's about. That's what the loan was for.
Well, I thought it was for code enforcement in general.
No, it's just for that one specific project.
So, way back a year ago, you had this plan to go after this house? $10,000?
So, we started code enforcement on that property back in 2016. And we went through all the regular processes and notifying the owners and hearing nothing and hearing nothing. And we did, we served them, we did everything. It took us quite some time. And then last year, we got to the point where we had, was it two or three properties that no one had responded to our, the city's attempts to try to get it cleaned up. And so, the council met and they decided that they were going to go ahead and take one of those properties as kind of a trial basis and see how it goes to, the next step would be to get a judgment against it, a legal judgment. And then, if that didn't work to get the owners to clean it up, then the next step would be after the judgment would be to foreclose on it. And then sell it. And then get, get it cleaned up hopefully and get the money back that way. So, I'm just explaining to you the history.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
And so, that's, that's the process. This was the house that they chose. And at that time, we said, how are we gonna pay for it? Because we know the judgment and the foreclosure is gonna be expensive. It could cost as much as $10,000 was kind of our, our top of what we thought it might cost.
It's just that I was coming to the meetings then, and when I heard the $10,000 that you needed, there wasn't anything mentioned about a house. And I never heard the council discussing any particular property.
That's right.
This was just in general?
They did not, they did not talk about the specifics in the council meetings because it was a code enforcement case. And they were trying to keep from pinpointing one in particular. They were talking in very general terms, but it was all specifically about moving forward with this one house. And that was gonna be kind of our test case to see what it really takes to go through this process and how it works and if it's successful and, and that kind of thing.
And we did that in executive session.
Yes, they did do some of it in, some of the discussion and of it in executive session. When they talked about details, that, that was done in the executive session. 'Cause it was, it's a legal case, so. So, that's, that's what that loan was all about, is this one. I can update you and let you know that there is someone who's, is a buyer for that property, and they're working with the city and the city's working with them to come to an agreement to hopefully get this closed and paid off. And it looks like it, that we've, from what I can tell, it looks like we're in agreement of what needs to be done. And so, we're just kind of in, in the final stages here. And if all of that happens, then we'll, we should be able to get it paid off in the next month or two. I mean, if things go smooth, so.
I can't see spending this much money on a test case.
Well, I, I can't, that decision was made before, and I mean, I'm just explaining to you the history. That's, that's what it is.
Well, I don't think that's a very good way to spend taxpayer dollars.
Well, the, the plan is to get it all back. And it is. At this point, it looks like we will get it all paid back. So, that, that's been the goal, is to get it cleaned up and get the money paid back so that the taxpayers don't have to pay for it. And if this ends the way we think it will, then it will be considered successful and the taxpayers won't have paid a dime. And it'll be cleaned up.
But that just doesn't sound right to me at all. So, I have another question then about the codification. Been going through this for two or three years and it still isn't paid for?
It's still not done. They don't fill us until they're done. But we are extremely close. I just got an email this week from them saying that they need the color picked out for the folder and making sure that the type set is right. So, they're finally getting extremely close. Hopefully, in the next month or two, we'll have it completed.
Okay, so is the comprehensive plan done?
Nope. It's still getting worked on.
You know, that, that is ridiculous.
Okay, but we're here to talk about the budget.
Well, this is part of the budget.
This is a budget topic.
And we're paying the sky thousands of dollars.
If you wanna go over why, you know, some things aren't done. We can talk about that. But that's not on the agenda for tonight to talk about why, but we can, I'd be more than happy to discuss that.
Well, could we put it on the next agenda?
Sure.
To discuss this? 'Cause this is?
Sure.
This is no good. There's no excuse for it, actually. I'm, I'm done.
Did anybody want any more explanations about anything in the budget?
No.
I'd be happy to.
I understand.
So, I guess we're at the, back to the, back to the, do we have a motion?
Yes, do we have a motion?
I thought we already had a motion.
Yeah, we already have a motion.
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry. Yes. So, now we just need to vote? That was the discussion.
All in favor?
Yes, we did get a second. Jason Daly?
Aye.
Aye.
Got three ayes? Is that correct? Okay. Three ayes?
I'm gonna say.
Now you say, are there any nays?
Are there any nays?
A no vote, the ma, the attorney said that a no vote is counted as a no. Not voting counts as a no. So, that's what I'm saying. And if you abstain, just for information, if you abstain, you have to abstain from the discussion and the vote. You don't get to just have the discussion and then abstain from the vote. So, this, that's the process. But anyways, just trying to explain.
The motion carried. The third item of business tonight is for the council to consider resolution 222019, authorizing the mayor to execute the law enforcement contract with Lewis County Sheriff's Office for the years 2020 and 21. Do we have a motion on the resolution?
I move to approve resolution 222019, authorizing the mayor to execute the memorandum and understanding with Lewis County Sheriff's Office for Law Enforcement Services for the fiscal years 2020, 2021 substantially as written.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any council discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carried. The next item of business is for council to consider resolution 232019, authorizing the mayor to execute the contract for $750,000 CDBG grant. Do we have a motion on the resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution 23-2019, authorizing the mayor to execute the CDBG grant contract with the Washington Department of Commerce for the Vader Wastewater Treatment Facility improvements in the amount of $750,000 substantially as
Is there any council discussion on that? Oh, do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Is there any council discussion? Don't waste one. Kinda remind you. Is, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is for the council to consider resolution 242019, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract amendment for the Civil West Engineering Contract. Is there a motion on the resolution? Do we have a second?
Wait, we don't have a motion.
Oh, we don't have a motion yet. Is there a motion on the resolution?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution 242019, authorizing the mayor to execute the amendment to construction oversight contract for the wastewater treatment plant improvement project with Civil West substantially as written.
Now, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any council discussion on the resolution? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. The last item of business tonight is for all of the newly-elected officials to be sworn into office. According to RCW 298.60.280, Part III, the newly-elected officials should be sworn in at the last regular meeting of the governing body. We would like to ask our city clerk treasurer to swear in Donna Rogers, Mike Parsons, Samantha Lovelady, and myself. Do we have any?
Can we all get a cover? Would somebody like to be our phototaper for us, the documents that this swearing-in is happening? Oh, Jason's gonna do it. That makes sense. So?
Can we come up to the front?
Yeah, usually we come up front, but we all just line up and watch. Get a close-up.
Hold on, this is my boss taking some dirty pictures there.
Uh-oh. You guys all just kind of stand, maybe stand over that way so he can get you all in. If you're too close, he won't be able to get you all in. Okay, so you guys, it's all the same until we get to the very end. When I say the duties of the office of, and then you guys, of course, will say council member, and you'll say mayor when I get to that end, okay?
And it's different when you say your name, too.
Yeah, that's true. You all should say your own name. So, you ready? Oh, you have to raise your right hand, please. Okay. I, state your name.
Samantha Lovelady.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm?
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States?
And the laws of the United States.
And the State of Washington?
And the State of Washington.
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially perform?
And impartially perform.
And discharge?
And discharge.
The duties?
The duties.
Of the office?
Of the office.
Of?
Mayor.
City Council. Position one. According to the law?
According to the law.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
Amen. You did it.
Amen.
I don't know what to say. Yes. Okay, you each get to sign one. So, sign right there. Donna?
I don't know what to say.
Sign that one at the top. Mike? Yours right there. Where'd you go? Right on the top there.
Congratulations, everybody.
Yay! Nice job. Super.
12. Sorry.
Yes, today's the 12. And it doesn't give you much room, but you have to write like seven or 20.
It has more letters than just one.
Signature first.
Yes, signature, please. Oh, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
Okay. And then I'm just gonna make copies of these, and I will give you the originals back after the copies are made. And then the hot part goes to the county for their record, so, that's good.
I don't need to put that there.
Nope, just Lois Wilson, that's all you need.
Well, super duper. Thank you.
You're all official for 2020.
Mookie dookie. Yeah, do we have any, one signed up for public comment?
Nope, no more signed up.
Do we have any elected official comments?
I have some comments I'd like to make. I know we do, um, awful lot, all the money, it seems like that the city has goes for code enforcement. I would like to see, uh, I drove around the community the other day, and it looks like we have an R V park with a few houses in it. Every place you look, there's people living in these RVs. And, uh, some of the code enforcement that's going after places that, uh, it seems real selective to me. I've heard that over on Sixth Street, there's RVs parked out there that's dumping raw sewage into the ground, and nobody seems to be doing anything about that.
What street?
Over on Sixth Street. You know, and there are places in this community that have really been overlooked that are even worse than, um, particular houses right now that the city's going after. So, uh, I don't, why isn't anything done about those? Like, the old house that started all this to begin with is still standing over there. The Quonset Hut mess is still over there. Nothing's being done about that. You got Ray Field's place over there. Nothing's being done about that, uh, that I can see. Uh, and I guess all of the fines against those places have been forgiven, and yet nothing's getting done about those. So I'm curious why that is happening, and we're not going after the really bad ones in the community instead of ones that are really being fixed up and, uh, taken care of.
A big comment, um, also, we are still accepting gifts and donations down for our gift baskets. Giving Tree and everything is up at the restaurant, um, the cafe. So if anybody's still interested in giving this season, have an extra few bucks. Uh, let us know down there, too.
Oh, on that topic, those will be delivered on the twentieth, correct?
Right, yeah, we.
Just so everyone knows, those will be delivered.
So we deliver on the twentieth, yes.
So if you are receiving one, keep your ear out. You should be getting a phone call that morning.
Is there any other comments?
That's it?
Okay, well, I'll close the meeting. At six thirty-four.